The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on closed session items?
We do have one hand raised, Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead.
This is not my session. I have a question. I've sent, I'm trying to send you an email back and see if you guys can look into see if you can work on the the new letter.
We got it. Yes. We did receive.
Okay. I don't know. I tried to work on that. It is not working for me.
Okay, we will try again.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Michaels, do we have any other public comment?
There is no more public comment on closed session items.
Great. We will now go into closed session and we will see you all at 7:00 PM. Good evening. My name is Robin Jankowicz and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Vanessa Cardenas and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish speaking families can hear the instructions?
Absolutely. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. La interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva de esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación desde un computador, haga clic en el icono de interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla dentro de la aplicación Zoom. En un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en el botón que dice More o más, en la parte inferior de su pantalla, que indica la interpretación en el idioma desde dentro de la aplicación Zoom. Se trata de un canal independiente que le permitirá escuchar simultáneamente la traducción del inglés a español. Por favor, tenga en cuenta que los servicios de interpretación no están disponibles cuando se une a nuestra reunión llamando. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser is absent tonight. Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Who am present. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation tonight and moving forward will be both virtual online and in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Trustee Water, do you have a report on closed session items?
Yes. Item D1, whoops. Yes, item B1, student discipline. Board recommends an expulsion of student 101, excuse me, 10132022A.
Move to expel.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor. May I have a roll call vote, please, Vera?
Yes, trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Riser. I'm sorry, trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
And D1B, readmitted expulsion. Board recommends readmitted expulsion of student 10142021B.
Move to readmit.
First by trustee Gracia.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez-Mares. May I please get a roll call vote, Vera?
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We're now going to have the flag salute and I would ask that the AP Gov glass leads us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. Approval of the agenda, may I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor. Approval of the agenda passes. Moving on to approval of minutes, September 22nd, 2022.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor. Motion passes. A recognition of visitors and employee organizations, Dr. Masetti.
Thank you, President Jankowicz. I'd like to welcome tonight. I see the president of CSEA, Mr. Hector Gallegos. Can you please promote Mr. Hector Gallegos? So that he may address the board.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know if you guys can hear me. I'm President. Representative of CSEA. Welcome, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Gallegos. That is the only special guest that I see here tonight. Thank you so much.
Oh, we have a special guest.
Right on time. Come up to the podium. We'll start with Ms. Gail Young from NVA. Ms. Walder is here from NAPS as well.
Hi, I'm Gail Young. I am president of Napa Valley Educators Association. We represent teachers, nurses, and counselors. I am excited to be here tonight. You actually have made a decision and we were so very excited about a 7% raise and a 2% off salary. I think that it's a wonderful thing for our for our whole organization. I think we all work very hard and it is, I think it's wonderful that we have done the work that needs to be done in order to right-size our district to be able to compensate appropriately our employees. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Walder. I'm president of NAPS, NAPS Association of People's Services. I'm pleased to be here tonight as well. Like Gail, I represent a group of dedicated employees who have put a lot of heart and soul into their jobs, as I know many, many of us have done the last several years. And to be acknowledged with a cost of living adjustment that recognizes the degree of difficulty that the job has entailed the last couple of years. And to also to offset costs in this uncertain economy is greatly appreciated by our membership. I wanted to take a brief moment to also acknowledge that, you know, we are moving towards elections and I want to take a moment as a parent and alumni parent of Napa Valley Unified School District. We've had the experience of being the parent whose child's school was slated to be closed. It didn't happen in 2005. It did happen in 2020. I'm also the parent of a school that was closed last, this last June and I think I don't envy you the position that you're in. I don't envy you the hard decisions that you have to make. What I do know is that without those decisions and without making hard choices, we would be in far worse shape as a district. And I think it's really important and I don't think that message can be echoed enough. So I just want to express my gratitude to this board, to our administration, who has had to make hard choices in the face of opposition of upset community members. And I get the school is community. And my child's school was that place where he was welcome and he was a part of. I don't discount that. I also think it's important that we work together for the collective good of all of our students. So I thank you for the hard work you do.
Thank you, Ms. Walder. We now have recognition of Students of the Month. Principal Sisneros, are you, are you here to introduce your two students?
That I am. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, President Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and guests that are here tonight with us. I am excited to be back and presenting some of our top stars, but first I gotta share a little something. We are back and celebrating 20 years of service and completing the, and also completing our first trimester, pentamaster at Valley Oak High School. Today, we celebrated a great number of students and recognized their academic achievement. Just some quick data for you, because I know you like data. We have 73% of our students, I have 90% attendance or higher. So that's a huge testament to all the work for my staff. And 68% of our students earned a C or better in this pentamaster. So we're looking forward to the next, the next few pentamesters on our campus. But again, this is a huge testament to the, to the work of the staff, the students and our families that are working together to make sure students have opportunities to achieve at the highest level. And when that said, it is my honor to introduce to you tonight our first student of the month. It's Miles Felix Espinoza. She's from, let's see, where did Miles go? There, there he is. What can I say about Miles? He is one of the most gifted math minds that we have at Valley Oak. He's taken, you know, the class with data science and my understanding from Mr. Garcia is that he's just taking it to the max and really enjoying not just the course itself, but the class environment. Huge contributor to the class, asking some really critical questions. And as they're looking at real data based on surveys that they've done so far, it was just, it's a pleasure to see students' math just really learning every single day with numbers that matter. And so with that said, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Miles and Miles is going to share a little something about his journey and also his future plans. Miles, are you here?
I actually don't see Miles on.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm so sorry you didn't get a chance to listen to him because again, he was just gonna have incredible essay to share with you. How about is, do we have, because I can't tell on my end, do we have Dinata?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So let me say something a little first. Thank you for being here. This young lady, just, I've had the opportunity to talk to her a few times and just very insightful, very charismatic. And then I also learned that she completed her CNA studies prior to coming to Valley Oak. It's, she's a mom. And so learning how to balance the school and being a parent and making sure that her son Gonzalo is well taken care of and on top of her studies because her motivation is to do well so that she can offer her son the best future that she can possible. Teachers just love, love, love her, having her in class. Her smile is contagious. But also how she pushes the bar within the classroom. So it's a great honor for me to introduce you, Dinata, that's gonna share a few words with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Narrows. I would like to begin. I'm so sorry. Good evening, Board of Trustees, the Napa Valley Community Foundation and guests. I would like to begin by thanking my mother and my baby boy, who are my number one supporters and give me the motivation to excel and everything that comes my way. As young adults, we don't always value or acknowledge certain opportunities that come our way. We take little to no interest at times and take things for granted until those doors are shut. Sitting in a classroom chair is such an opportunity and a privilege we don't always value until that privilege is taken. On November 12th, 2021, I gave birth to my son Gonzalo, who has become my biggest motivation and my reason to succeed. When you're 17 with a newborn, you have people from side to side telling you how your life pretty much is over. How you will spend the rest of your life providing for a kid and end up doing nothing with yourself. Receiving all those negative comments really affected me. But what crushed me more was the fact I was no longer accepted in school for having absolutely no credits and not taking school seriously. At this point, I only had two options in life. That was whether I'd do my best to motivate myself and get my life together or prove everybody else right. I decided to do what was best for not only myself, but my son. I enrolled and completed the Certified Nursing Assistant Program and transferred to Valley Oak, where I will complete my high school education. A school that has the kindest staff and very patient teachers, which has helped me obtain a 4.0 GPA to this day. Gives me that, it gives me so much more motivation when I see that it really is possible to succeed. When you succeed, you are in a position to give rather than to take. Again, I would like to thank my mother and my son and my entire school faculty for the support and to the school board members and the foundation. Thank you for this award. Thank you, Mrs. Narrows.
Congratulations, Dinata. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Dev, are you here to introduce your Students of the Month?
I am. Thank you. Good evening, NVUSD Board of Trustees, President and Dr. Masetti. My name is Avinab Dev and I'm the new principal at New Technology High School. First and foremost, congratulations for the month at Valley Oak. Here at New Tech, we've got a really successful start to the school year and I'm thankful for the opportunity to shine a light on some of our amazing New Tech students. Today, I'm happy to introduce the students who have truly embodied what it means to be a New Tech Penguin. The resilience and hard work shown by both of these students have been remarkable. Our Student of the Month for September is Liliana Hernandez. Liliana is a senior at New Tech. Liliana has an exceptional academic record. Her teacher shared that she is resilient, shows grit in all situations. Liliana is a true mathematician who embodies New Tech's core values of trust, respect, and responsibility. Liliana was not able to be here tonight, but she wanted me to share the following on her behalf. To the NVUSD Board of Trustees, I apologize. I wasn't able to make it today, but here are a few words. I want to thank everyone who nominated me as the Student of the Month. It's a very honorable title I hope to live up to. And I wouldn't be able to accept this without New Tech High School, which has given me many opportunities. Everything New Tech High has put into my path, teachers, classes, projects, has helped me improve as a student and become the person I am today. Thank you again. Congratulations to Liliana and her family. Onto our Student of the Month for October, congratulations to Natalia Olivera. Natalia is also a senior at New Tech High. Natalia's teachers describe her as a quiet leader, a self-advocate, and a friend who will be there at all times. She is a motivated, intelligent person with a strong understanding of her future and is dedicated to pave the path most suited to her strongest abilities. We are very proud to have a student like Natalia represent New Tech High. Natalia was also not able to be here tonight, but she wanted me to share the following on her behalf. Hello, everyone. I apologize for not being able to attend this meeting. I just wanted to say how honored I am to be recognized by New Tech for being named Student of the Month. I'm genuinely grateful for the experience and memories I've made, along with the bonds and friendships I've had throughout the course of being at New Tech. Being a part of a small community makes it feel like I'm part of one big family, which I couldn't be more grateful to be a part of. Congratulations to Natalia and her family. Have a great evening.
Off, so I, I do want to express my gratitude to the Napa Valley Ed Foundation and Jennifer Stewart and her team for their continued support of the Student of the Month program. Thank you. Public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during the section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Trustee Water, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items received via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any comment on non-agenda items?
We do. First speaker is Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Napa Valley Unified School District Board members and community at large. My name is Norma Ortiz, parent of an eighth grader. Students who experience challenges fulfilling the A through G track requirements, those who don't qualify for special education services but might almost be borderline of meeting the criteria for an IEP individualized education plan but don't. What are their options? Those students who need additional time, the content might be hard for them or learn at a slow pace and differently, but don't qualify for special education supports, how can we better support them? What other placements can be provided to students other than Valley Oak in the event they qualify for that pathway? Those who have home hospital, independent studies, alternative programs, vocational programs, homeless students, English language learners with dual category, economic disadvantages, those who can't handle large classrooms, et cetera. A less rigorous path without sending them to Valley Oak if they might prefer another option, academic community. As a parent, I would like to know precise data on dropout rates at high schools and chronic absenteeism. How are students being encouraged and empowered to not give up and continue their studies if, under the above circumstances, who might not be passing all of their classes even in the general education setting? Question. Might the existing pathway need some revisions, adjustments, inclusions, recalibration in terms of the environmental expectations? We need to continue supporting all students, even those who might have low IQs, so that none don't give up in their education journey and want to enroll at our colleges and universities and avoid ADA laws? Perhaps expand the alternative program? Question. In addition to the delays during COVID-19 impact in education and consequences and the staff shortages. Every student should want to go to college and higher education. However, this is not something all students want, for whatever reason it might be. We want to make sure all students have the abilities to feel comfortable with challenges and that we continue to support them to gain confidence, thriving in different academic environments and to find mechanism supports to continue working in their weaknesses and strengths to meet the standards. Advance interventions so students who need it feel more at home and so forth. Next academic school year, my daughter will transition to high school. And I believe it might be a good idea to have at our high school websites a parental guide resources also available in paper format with information on the AG requirements, the graduation requirements set forth by the California Department of Education pursuant to education code. For informational purposes, Fall 2022 school tours are available November and December at Redwood Middle School, mornings 8:45 through 9:45 on these dates, October 25th, November 1st, November 8th, and November 15th. Where parents can also get information about the programs, services, committees, events, departments, ask questions, provide feedback, and so forth. Also at Napa High, the tours are on November 1st, November 15th, November 19th. If interested, according to the website, please contact Allison at A-D-E-L-O-R-I-M-I-E-R at nvusd.org by providing student's name, parent's name, current school attending, and phone number. I am also proud of my.
I'm so sorry. We're at the three-minute mark. I do apologize. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any other public comment?
We do. Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead.
Good evening, or members, superintendents. Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you. I hope this will work on, so I can get more a new letter for the school. And another thing, I tried to call you guys. There's nobody in the office today. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mr. Michaels?
We have no further public comment.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to reports from the Board of Education and our Student Board Rep. Student Board Rep Gomez, would you like to start us off?
Do you think we could come back to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Chu?
Sure. I, the last three weeks, I guess, that we've been out, been pretty busy. September 27th, I attended a site visit to American Canyon Middle School along with trustee Gonzalez-Mares. Thank you, Principal Carlisa Battalier, for hosting us. On the 3rd of October, I attended the Special Education Matriculation Information Night. Thank you to Director Terry Lynn Russetti and her staff for providing valuable information to our parents who are about to transition from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. On the 4th, I attended the ACMS, ACHS, ELAC meeting. Got really a good taste of what it really felt like to get that interpretation because I had to put on the, you know, the headset to get that interpretation into English. So really happy that we're providing that because I could actually understand everything that was going on. On October 7th, I attended the coffee with the principal at Napa Junction. Thank you to Principal Norrie Montgomery for inviting me. Got really great feedback from the parents there. On the 11th of October, I had a governance and implementation work meeting with Dr. Masetti. And I also attended the Canyon Oaks PTO meeting. And on the funner side of things, I attended the ACHS versus Napa High football game on the 30th of September and also the ACHS and Vintage Football Game on October 7th. Those are always fun. And on the 8th of October, I helped Canyon Oaks Garden Club in their work party. So did a lot of cutting of large shrubbery. And Mrs. Liz Corey just did, does an awesome job with that program, really happy and with that. My fifth grader is attending that program and just looking forward to all the great things that they're doing. They had four giant pumpkins growing in their garden this year. So that was pretty amazing. And I also dropped in on ACHS Academic Decathlon Team that is hosted by Ms. Alma Gonzalez, the sponsor of that club, really amazing group of kids. And I continue to engage with constituents about the school district, including Measure A2 down in American Canyon. And I want to finish by acknowledging that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so I am wearing my team. So in honor of our wonderful superintendent that has fought and won against breast cancer. And I just realized today that it is really, you know, kind of a merging of my professional life as a cancer geneticist with my school board life as the trustee of NVUSD. So.
I'm glad I provided you that opportunity.
In the case, but it's, yes, symmetrical. And October is also Filipino-American Heritage Month. So, yeah, so there are, Um, yeah, so there are, you know, some things that are, are being put out, um, to learn a little bit more about the culture we have down in American Canyon, so looking forward to, to seeing that all month.
Thank you, trustee Chu. Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
Yeah, um, so I want to thank trustee Chu and principal, uh, Carlisa Battalier for hosting me because trustee Chu could have done that tour with her eyes closed and it was just, uh, we were just there, what, a couple of weeks before to do the grand opening of the new facilities and the multipurpose room, the library and all of that, but just going through the, through the campus and the classrooms and just seeing the kiddos go from break to the next class and all of that is just a lot of great energy to see it in, in live in motion with, with everybody. Um, and she gets recruited to volunteer all the time. And so
Voluntold.
She's voluntold. Um, and, um, I also participated, which will be a, a, a later reported out um, to the city of Napa meeting that we had. And, um, just a, a, an announcement, it is, uh, Latino Heritage Month and there is a exhibition at the Napa County Historical Society um, by the Napa Valley Latino Heritage Committee and the St. Helena Historical Society. It's called Ilos Invisibles, Visible Threats, and just, um, excellent opportunity to stop by the Historical Society and see the exhibition between now and, uh, March, actually, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Water?
All right. Well, I've had lots of community engagement over the last uh, few weeks, and actually, and every Tuesday night, it's going to keep on happening. And, uh, last week, we did have the meeting with, uh, representatives from the city of Napa. And, uh, also last week, um, I had a treat. I got to uh, spend several days altering a sequin homecoming candidate dress. And I was thrilled that, uh, Chloe did make princess, so you know, the effort was worth it, and I enjoyed the, uh, big game. The Napa Big Game, always loved the halftime show for home, not big game, pardon me, it was homecoming. And, uh, let's see, I had a governance meeting yesterday with the superintendent, and today I met trustee Gracia at Shearer School, and among other things, we, uh, we had a wonderful chat with Principal Gardner, and we went to the TK classes where they were, the children were playing, you know, having lots of hands-on play, play, play activities. It was fun. And then, um, we went into the, uh, middle school pilot and saw some students engaged in some pretty high-level, uh, analysis, you know, there, and they were learning skills that will help them out when they end up in eleventh grade English. And then I ran over to Silverado and had a delicious lunch. Um, it was, uh, pot sticker day and, uh, dropped in and took a look at the library, which is really quite nice. And then I stood out there on the stairs and saw Ms. Christopherson and, uh, many other, many other folks working there, Mr. Pearson, and, uh, watched the kids playing in the sun and it just, I was thinking, boy, this is one of the most beautiful views a school can have. That's the end of my report.
Sure. So on the twenty-third, I attended the Vintage High School game versus Casa Grande. And then on the thirtieth, the vintage game in Petaluma. On the sixth, I attended the meeting with the town of Yountville. Uh, also on the sixth, I was, uh, scheduled to attend a site visit at Valley Oak, uh, but was unable to visit due to the principal being pressed into service as a teacher due to a lack of substitutes. On the sixth as well, I attended the Silverado Middle School Safety Meeting. And then on the seventh, that was the Vintage High School versus, uh, Ham Can High School Football Game. And then on the thirteenth, as, uh, trustee Water already alluded, we had a great tour at Shearer, both elementary and middle. Same school, but you know, they have both programs. Um, and so it was, uh, a good time. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. So just a few opportunities that I'd like to bring up in the community for the youth and for students. Given that college applications are in full swing and deadlines are quickly approaching, it's forced me to reflect on my own work in the community and its importance. One such opportunity for those interested in environmentalism or enhancing our community is through the Napa RCD program. If you go to their website, napparcd.org, you'll see that there's a specific tab that has information regarding their volunteer program as well as other programs aimed at the youth, which includes internships. Additionally, the Napa County Library has a teen LGBTQ book club who meets once a month. Their next meeting is a week from today at the library from four to five, and they will be reading Heartbreak Bakery by A.R. Capetta. Again, this is next Thursday at four at the Napa County Library, so if you're a teen that's possibly interested, it'd be great for you to attend because all are welcome. And finally, I would like to acknowledge and congratulate the winners of the Napa Opioid Safety Coalition sticker contest. Vintage High School students Mildred Rosales, Angelica Morales, and Emeline Reinseimer. Each of their designs were very creative and showed off their artistic prowess, so congrats to them. And thanks all that submitted a design and took the time to participate. I hope that we can continue putting an effort into drug and fentanyl awareness so we can reach everyone in emphasizing the message of their dangers and the benefit, and that the benefits of drug usage pale in comparison to their unhealthy and potentially detrimental effects. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. October is, as it's been stated, is Cancer Awareness Month. To honor survivors we love, those we don't know, and to honor those that we have lost. I met with, um, Adam Housley to hear his take on education and its relationship to our city partners. I won't go through all the merits of each of my site visits, but I've been to Vintage High School, Visi Elementary, Unidos, Redwood Middle School, and Browns Valley Elementary. I attended the Town of Yountville meet, meeting. I attended two informational bond measure community meetings. I had the opportunity, as did trustee Water, for a great deal of community engagement and outreach over the last few weeks. I too had my implementation and governance meeting. And in the fun category, trustee Chu, I attended the, uh, Vintage High Napa Frosch JV and Varsity volleyball games. Okay, Board Representative Reports. Special education?
We have not met.
Thank you. City of American Canyon?
We have not met.
Thank you. City of Napa, I know you met.
Yes, we did. Um, we, um, held the meeting. That was last week. It was like two weeks ago. But, um, we had, um, Assistant City Manager, um, staff from Public Works, um, and on behalf of, um, Chief, uh, Gonzalez, um, Lieutenant think Pacheco was there, and, uh, Mr. Vin. And we talked a lot about the general plan that the city has. Um, they're putting that final plan to council on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Of October.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and just talked about housing and Napa Pipe and just, um, other Costco. When is that going to happen? It was no date yet, just FYI. Um, and, um, they're in the, um, local, we, we did have, uh, they did, they did share, there was a report that they were going to email us actually on the local roadway safety plan. There are ten intersections and corridors in the city of Napa that are high collision. Just something for us to be aware of, as many of them can be around our, our schools, and so they didn't have the report there, but they did present it to the council, um, and I know they were going to share that with us. Um, and, um, yeah, just, I think really good to meet in person. I think there's a lot of firsts that are happening like that, and so it was really nice to be able to sit down and get to know the face and not the square. Um, and just have that, that conversation. So I don't know, trustee Water, if there was anything you wanted to add?
No, that's perfect. That's exactly what, what, what we talked about.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Gracia, would you like to address the Town of Yountville meeting?
Sure. Yeah, we did meet, uh, and we discussed the developments at both, uh, Yountville and the school district. Uh, we discussed everything from district staffing issues to the anticipated changes coming to the Yountville Board as a result of the coming election.
Thank you very much. And Superintendent and Executive Staff Report, Dr. Musetti?
Thank you, President Jankwitz, Jankwitz. So good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff and community. Since our last board meeting, I had the pleasure of visiting Bel Air Elementary and New Technology High School where we have two new two new principals in their first years on the job. Principal Dev, who we saw tonight, and Principal Title, they both led me through their schools with confidence, pride and enthusiasm. So that was great to observe, and I want to thank them for hosting me. I also had positive school visits at McPherson Elementary and Silverado Middle School. It was great to observe those two school communities in action as well. Last week, I attended the District English Learner Advisory Committee, our DLAC, meeting, and also held the second Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee meeting of the year on Monday earlier this week. In both meetings, I was so humbled by the knowledge, the perspective, commitment and willingness so many of our parent leaders bring to our school system. The parent leaders and representatives on both of these committees are so generous with their time and energy. Often, they're working in these system-level committees while also being very, very active at their children's own schools. They are, are, they are authentically interested in learning about how the entire district works. The parents provided constructive feedback on the implementation of many of our initiatives in both committees. These initiatives that are focused on continuously improving the educational experiences of all of our students. I want to recognize these parent leaders from across all of our schools and thank them for their deep partnership. Next, I also want to inform our stakeholders that a public notice regarding the postponement of the celebrating our schools' October and April non-business meetings has been added to our website. Given the demand on principals, uh, school site administrative teams, assistant principals and principals, all of our teachers right now due to staffing shortages, we want to make sure that our school site teams can give their full attention to operating our campuses. So we look forward to returning to our celebrating our schools' meetings in the fall of 2023. It's been stated a couple of times already, but as a breast cancer survivor, I want to recognize that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As I confronted the disease myself almost two years ago, so many staff members and community members reached out to me, letting me know that either they themselves or a friend or family member had been diagnosed with breast cancer. Cancer changes everyone and every family it touches, including ours. So join me today in raising awareness about the impact of breast cancer on the women in our local community and beyond. Since we don't have another board meeting until November, I'll end by saying that I'm looking forward to experiencing my fifth big game. Between Napa High School and Vintage High School, one of the perks of being the NVUSD Superintendent, it's always such an amazing night, the NVUSD, in the NVUSD community, and I look forward to attending big game number fifty-one, which is scheduled to happen on Friday, October the twenty-eighth. And lastly, um, I want to just thank, uh, President Gail Young, President of, of NVA, President Leslie Walder of NAPS, and President Hector Gallegos of CSCA for their presence tonight, for their words, kind words of support, and most important, for their collaboration and partnership. Um, I just love some of the, the words that were stated. Um, thank you for the two of you being here, present, and Hector being online. Um, it is really truly through the partnership and collaboration with all of them as extraordinary labor leaders that we are able to accomplish sometimes difficult work that ensures that we can continue to treat our employees with respect and professionalism through one of the number one ways of doing that, which is ensuring that their compensation remains competitive, and we could not do it without the extensive collaboration that we do with all of you. So thank you for constantly extending that collaboration and partnership. So with that, I'm going to, um, introduce my assistant superintendents who will report out on their respective, uh, divisions, and, um, we'll start out with Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees operational services.
Uh, good evening, President Jankowitz, MBST Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Musetti, Student Board Representative Sam Gomez, and members of the MBSD community. In transportation, the Director of Transportation, Justin Binion, and Supervisor Fernando Rivera are just finishing up a series of training sessions, uh, with two current bus drivers who are learning to become behind-the-wheel trainers. Once the two drivers complete their training with Mr. Binion and Mr. Rivera, the applicants will then have to pass a test administered by the Department of Education to be certified. By building this type of capacity internally with current employees, Mr. Binion will now be able to train more potential bus driver applicants who have to pass a driver training program to be eligible for employment. And I want to commend Mr. Binion for being a creative problem solver in this particular situation. In food service, uh, recently, uh, we just recently, uh, reported on the number of meals served at breakfast and lunch for the month of September. One hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-nine lunches were served and one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred forty-seven breakfasts were served. This represents a nineteen percent increase in lunch counts and a forty-nine percent increase in breakfast counts when compared to September of twenty twenty-one. Additionally, the September twenty-twenty-two monthly reimbursement claim totals are, or is, one million one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. I believe this is the highest reimbursement claim NVSD Food Services has ever submitted. I want to acknowledge the incredible hard work of the entire food service department and specifically mention the excellent teamwork of the specialists Megan Hupp, Mohamed Yasin, central kitchen managers Melissa Zeehwe and Rene Story, and the office team of Joe Aurora and Rosie Mendoza Ortiz, uh, while in the absence of our food service director, uh, Kristen Teakle, who is on maternity leave. Their exceptional leadership has been quite impressive. In maintenance, uh, briefly, I would like to mention, uh, and recognize HVAC filter specialist Sergio Rodriguez for helping recently a West Park second-grade student, uh, learn more about our HVAC units, along with helping Mr. Rodriguez change the filters in one of the HVAC units. Mr. Rodriguez's patience and willingness to share his knowledge definitely left a lasting impression with the student, which I think you can see on our website. And finally, in the professional development, which is happening tomorrow, um, several of members of the operational services will be participating in one form of training or another uh, during the professional development day. Transportation drivers and head and day custodians will be attending the in-service delivered by Dr. Ree, uh, Victor Rios and his team in the morning. Uh, and most of our food service employees will be updating their food handling training. And later during the day, maintenance and custodial employees will receive fire extinguisher training, and lastly, maintenance and grounds employees will participate in the exciting training of boom and scissor lift training. So, thank you, and this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pearson. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, uh, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, President Jankowitz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Musetti, and Student Board Representative Gomez. I'm very excited for our upcoming, um, annual interest-based problem-solving training workshop that we're putting on. As many people know, interest-based problem-solving is the foundational approach to employee-employer relations, which has served NVUSD very well for almost forty years now. So training staff, including new site administrators, new, um, new site representatives and board members, ensures that we have a common language to work through complex challenges together in an open collaborative approach that facilitates, um, reaching the best solution possible. This year, we have a new spin on the training thanks to our NVEA Lead Negotiator and Napa High School Social Studies Teacher Deb St. Clair. Deb is an expert in educational technology and has helped us to create a hybrid format for the training. So this year, participants, um, they currently have access to the Google, to a Google Classroom for all the lectures, readings and activities to learn about interest-based problem-solving, everything from um, the history of why we do it to the actual step-by-step process. Um, and after completing the online portion at their convenience, then participants will gather on October twenty-fifth, where we'll meet and practice interest-based problem-solving in person together. Uh, it's very exciting to see this training evolve, yet remain and remain fresh and relevant while preserving the foundational elements. And for the first time, we have some participants from other districts who have heard about interest-based problem-solving and are interested in learning more. I'd also like to mention our latest staff spotlight on Fontaine Seegerquist. Fontaine is a physical education teacher at American Canyon High School. She was nominated by her colleagues, uh, in recognition for her exceptional teaching. Um, she cares deeply about her students and their learning, and she spends countless hours planning, exciting and engaging lessons. She's extremely thoughtful and goes above and beyond in her teaching, and in this spotlight, you'll get to learn a little bit more about what motivates Fontaine um, to do great work with students and how she enjoys spending her free time. So check it out in our latest staff spotlight in the staff newsletter. And if you know any other extraordinary employees in the NVUSD, please consider nominating them for staff spotlight. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. On behalf of Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, tonight we have Director Mary Ann Christopherson, who will be reporting out on behalf of the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President, uh, Jankowitz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Musetti, Student Representative Gomez, and the Napa Valley Unified Commu, Unified District Community. I'm excited to stand in for Assistant Superintendent Pat Audrey Jennings tonight, presenting on the work of the Instructional Support Services Division. Our entire team has been preparing Our entire team has been preparing for our first in-person Professional Learning Day since 2019. Tomorrow, over one thousand NVUSD classified and certificated staff will gather at American Canyon High School to engage in learning focus on the Board's annual priorities. More information about the Professional Learning Day will be shared at next week's Board Advisory Committee meeting. At the elementary level, the NVUSD Expanded Learning Programs have been open and providing needed after-school care and enrichment to students across all NVUSD elementary and middle school campuses. We are pleased to report that after-school intervention classes began this week at most elementary school sites, with additional schools coming on board in the next couple of weeks. Students in need of academic support in the Expanded Learning Programs are provided academic support two to three days per week by both credentialed teachers and trained instructional assistants. Interventions are currently focused primarily on math using Bridges interventions materials to ensure a strong connection to the content students are learning during the school day. To prepare our students for life beyond high school, we offer the PSAT during the school day. On Wednesday, October twelfth, we had twelve hundred and seventy-five eleventh-grade students at American Canyon High School, Napa High School, New Technology High School, Napa Valley Independent Studies, and Vintage High School had the opportunity to participate in the PSAT during school day, providing these students a chance to compete for scholarships, learn about advanced courses that align with their strengths, and practice for the SAT. Thank you. That concludes the Instructional Sports Services update.
Thank you, Ms. Christopherson. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees the Business Services Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the Board and the community. On the economic front, we are watching inflation very closely, as this is one of the primary drivers for Federal Reserve policy, which has been very hawkish and has resulted in an increase in the Fed funds rate of three-quarters point of a point at the last three meetings, and will likely, there'll be likely another three-quarter point increase at the next meeting. So why is this important? This is very important because it's led to a pullback in the stock market and real estate market. As a result, state revenues have been coming in slower than anticipated, about $2 billion per month. So big decreases, however, it's still very early. It's way too early to get overly concerned. Also, given our strong reserves, we are in a position to weather a very likely recession in the next twelve months or so. The entire Business Services Division has been very busy planning for tomorrow's Professional Learning Day. The Technology Team will be providing an onsite technical support, technical support to presenters and participants. The Fiscal Services Team, Data and Assessment, and Enrollment Departments will be providing training on a variety of topics to classified staff, including tips and tricks, tips and tricks for escape, how to run queries to pull and manipulate data, and how to support families for our upcoming open enrollment and registration season. This concludes my report.
That concludes our staff reports.
Thank you. Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion of item or items is requested by a Board Member. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee water, second by trustee Gracia. Vera, may I please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action items under General Services, Adoption of Revised Napa Valley Unified School District Governance Handbook. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second by.
Second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Morris. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three eleven, authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB three sixty-one and Government Code Section five four nine five three.
So moved.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Vera, may we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Bless you. Resolution twenty-three twelve, Approval and Adoption of Exhibit ninety-two seventy, Board Bylaws.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Vera, may I please have a roll call vote?
Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business Services, Board Policy six one five eight, independent study. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Administrative Regulation six one five eight, independent study.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Developer Agreement with Napa Pipe.
So moved.
First by trustee water, second by trustee Gracia. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public.
Student Board Rep. Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. AB twelve hundred slash twenty-seven fifty-six for NVEA, NAPS, Management Confidential, and CSEA.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Moving on to Human Resources. Local Assignment Options for Teacher Assignments, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Request to Hire Educator Less Than Fully Credentialed.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Employee Agreement Amendments for Executive Cabinet.
Move to approve.
One second, please. One moment. Consistent with the agreements reached with other employee bargaining groups and the application of the formula calculation, a compensation increase of seven percent retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-two, and a one-time off-salary schedule two percent increase in compensation is being recommended for the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendents. Approval of the attached Employee Agreement Amendments will amend the agreements between the Napa Valley Unified School District and the following employees: Dr. Rosatom Masetti, Dana Page, Patricia Andrew Jennings, Rabender did not roll off the tongue, Manguala, and Michael J. Pearson. It has. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Scoot Education Agreement.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Formula MOU with Salary Increase for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Instructional Services. Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution twenty-three ten, Certifying Compliance of Education Code Section six oh one one nine and Education Code Section six oh four two two.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Vera, may I please have a roll call vote?
Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
Nay.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Oh, on the public. Oh, you are correct. Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to revote. We have to have a public hearing. My apologies. But I do get to use the gavel. Open Public Hearing. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, we do not have any public comment. Vera, may I please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
Nay.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. Agreement between Child Start Inc. and Napa Valley Unified School District, ADD.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Agreement between Child Start Inc. and Napa Valley Unified School District, NBLA.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. School Plan for Student Achievement for Unidos Middle School.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Appointment of Napa Valley Unified School District Representatives to the Napa Valley Adult Education Consortium Board of Directors. First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Moving on to Operational Services. Ratification of License Agreements for Law Enforcement Agencies for Use of Facilities for Training Purposes.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Ratification of License Agreement with Napa County for Use of Facilities for Training Purposes.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. School Planning and Construction. Resolution twenty-three thirteen, California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Program.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Vera, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. SPC number thirty-eight seventy-one dash sixteen, Request for Payment to California Department of Education for Plan Review Associated with Napa Junction.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. SPC number seven point four dash two three, Request to Surplus for Relocatable Classrooms.
Move to approve.
First by trustee water, second by trustee Gracia. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Rep.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Motion passes. Informational Section of the Evening under General Services. Did anybody meet? Are there notes attached? There are not. Can you just let me know which ones by chance?
Yeah, so there are notes for the Curriculum and Student Support Committee, the Facilities and Technology Committee.
Great, thank you very much. Business Services Enrollment Report. Anybody have a comment? I think we all know what it says. Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Future Agenda Items. And just quickly, I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. We do appreciate an audience. Please feel free to come back at any time. And a round of applause to you guys.
So the public knows we're recognizing and applauding the AP Government class, correct?
From which high school?
Vintage High.
Okay. Now, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
I.
We are now adjourned.